The firemen, the police officers, so much danger in this world today. Please keep them safe and as well as our families. And as we move towards the summer months, we pray more for peace. We pray for the richness of goodness and everything. And we less violence, hatred, and disentitlement of people who just do not care. We ask that you will continue to bring hope and the love into this particular area. We thank you for the events that we have downtown and our staff. We ask that you will continue to be with them. More importantly, we ask that as we move forward, we pray that all of our elected officials here are safe and their families are safe. And the things that we're working on are pleasing in your psyche. These blessings we asking your name. Amen. But my prayers are to the United States of America.
And to the republic which is saints.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Lord Calderon.
Councilmember John DeWolken. Councilmember William Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Jim Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Will Brisington. Councilmember Russell Stahl. Councilmember Doris Dow.
Here.
Mayor Knox Y.
Here. You have the minutes of May 20th, 24. I believe there's an amendment to be offered.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Regarding the minutes reflecting on item 16A. From the May 20th meeting, the revisions should be as follows. I want to make sure I had that right, 16A, yes. So in the second paragraph, sorry, third paragraph where it says, "Councilmember Dow stated," should be rewritten, "Councilmember Dow stated that the funds are sourced from hotel and short-term rental stays and strike through approximately 10% of accommodation tax funds are being utilized to provide assistance." Instead, it should read that grant recommendations are within approximately 10% of what was requested overall, representing a 23% increase in granted awards from last year. Councilmember Dow also stated that strike through 57% of accommodations tax funds should rather read "The accommodations tax allocation for workforce housing development represents a 57% increase from last year and strike through is being utilized for supporting workforce housing development." Instead, should read that the city is using tourism tax revenue to reinvest and to serve the people who live in the city.
Second to the amendment?
Second.
Take an amendment, all in favor say aye.
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 Ayes have it. Now the minutes are approved unless there any objection as amended. But few folks have signed up to speak to us. Please observe the three-minute rules. Mr. Joe Farmer.
Joe Farmer, 207 Alpine Way. This past weekend, a golf tournament was held and the city of Greenville provided $20,000 of aid tax funds and next year has appropriated $60,000. Let's review what the city received for that. On June 3rd, a youth golf clinic was held in Greer. On June 6th, a downtown music concert was held in Spartanburg. On June 7th, a sponsors concert was held at Hartness. On June 6th through 9th, a golf tournament was held in Greer in Spartanburg. The host hotel was in Spartanburg. This tournament had over 80 sponsors ranging from $1,000 to $7,000. They got things such as a logo on a map, logo on signage, logo behind the tee box, full-page ad, logo on whole sponsorship. No Greenville city logo was on anything. Additionally, the tournament has given over $16 million since 2001 to charity. This year, we'll likely give close to $1 million. So they don't need the money and they didn't provide anything for visiting Greenville. Greenville was never mentioned in any update that I saw. Greenville only received the overflow that Greer and Spartanburg could not handle with their hotels. I use this as an example of how the aid tax committee needs clear direction, including qualifications on how to disperse the aid tax. This aid tax should only be used to increase tourism and not as a rebate for the collections. At $4.1 million collected last year, we need to be clear guidelines on these distributions. So I'm asking you tonight to please use the next six months to develop a playbook for this committee. I'm not saying this is a bad event. But we can't do anything right. And next year, we're going to spend $60,000 and likely get nothing again. We had a very successful weekend with a jazz festival. If you came down here, it was packed. We need to spend money on more of those things. We need to use some of this aid tax money as an incubator to help grow new ideas. Since this thing is established and has decided they're moving from Greenville, that's fine, let's wish them success. But let's take this money back and reallocate it to something that's going to bring visitors to Greenville and something we might could grow into the future. So I encourage you, please give them a playbook to work for. When they have, so when they start again in January, they know exactly what's expected of them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good comments. Ms. Amanda Delon.
Amanda Delion, 245 Meadowblossom Way, Simpsonville. And I attend Christ Church Episcopal School. Thank you to Mayor White, the City Council, Shannon Laverne, and all the city staff for the opportunity to speak tonight and for your service. I'm here in partnership with the Greenville Homeless Alliance to thank you for passing the fiscal year 2025 budget and to represent the youth advocates in Greenville just like me. On a normal weekday, I opens the Greenville News to an article about the shocking and distressing Supreme Court case of Johnson v. Grant's pass. The case threatens to allow cities the power to possibly find or criminalize people. People without homes, without access to emergency shelters, people who may have no choice but to sleep on public property. And I knew that Greenville, prosperous and impactful, could do something about this. And that's why I wanted to speak to you. As the Supreme Court considers this important ruling for our national community and as you all continue to lead and influence our local community, I attempted to organize a local rally for Johnson v. Grant's pass. And that's when I was connected with the Greenville Homeless Alliance, who invited me to learn about their collective efforts and who provided me the guidance to speak to you all today. I'm here to give you my thanks for directing hundreds of thousands of dollars to the budget, to affordable housing and homeless support, for taking great care in addressing the issue of homelessness, and for raising the voices of youth advocates like myself. As the city of Greenville website says, homelessness is not a crime, it is a community concern. And it is because of the values of this council that I can say I am proud to be a part of my city. Everyone in this room acknowledges that Greenville is at a period of growth where it is vital that our policies and values are just and secure. So I am grateful to the Greenville City Council and government for protecting those values. And I'm thrilled to watch as this city continues to uplift the beliefs of youth advocates and to address the plight of homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jack Logan.
Jack, we have a dress code now. It's t-shirt thing.
I do not campaign for, if you guys excuse me, I'm campaigning for a lot of people.
I heard you.
Okay.
It's hot out there.
That's right. I'm Jack Logan, 5051 Old Augusta Road, Greenville, South Carolina. I want to thank Ms. Fleming, and you're absolutely correct in that prayer. It's about safety and asking God to protect us all. I'm very disturbed about the gun violence that has occurred in the city of Greenville. And I want to see every person that come to this town, just like you said, Mayor White and Ms. Fleming from get-go, when the change came about in the city of Greenville, for people to come and enjoy. With the incident of an 821, that is not the first incident of tragedy where a bouncer has had a gun in a club. There was one in the county and a young man lost his life where there was a scuffle and a fight going on. I would ask this council that those bouncers are not SLED certified and know the proper way to handle a gun. In the state of South Carolina, most bar owners and club owners don't want guns in their clubs, nor should these people not SLED certified. That incident could have been prevented. And I do go, I don't know how y'all shut them down, temporary, I guess, but I do appreciate like that other outlaw club that was on Pendleton Street where the young man lost his life. But I do see that there's a need for more security in the city of Greenville with growth. And there should be less bars being opened because people don't care anymore, just as in that opening prayer. But I ask this city to stand behind the police, stand behind Sister Walt Wilkins, and prosecute to the fullest extent of the law for anyone that takes another person's life, anyone that caused harm to a person using a firearm. Let's keep Greenville safe and make it a happy place for people to come to. But while the city manager was out of town, Satan just took control. That mean you can't go back out on vacation. Satan just took control. But we have a good police department because I share it with the chief when I'm running at 4:30 a.m., I see them on the trail doing their job. I see them on the job protecting people. But there's too many outlaws running around the streets and we must stand behind the prosecution and the police. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clarence Thornton.
Clarence Thornton, I reside at 114 Dorothy Street, Greenville, South Carolina. First, I want to commend Judge with the honor Robert Moss Mack. I was a friend of my father's and they've been playing for I don't know how long in the mirror on him with the day. And Ms. Mack says she appreciate it and she thank you for those that was there. My father and him played for maybe like 40, 50 years together, maybe even longer than that. And I want to commend on that part. We talk about our situations in Greenville. You know, at some point in time, we got to address our real issues. And at some point in time, we can't be like the child that was buried next to tell the king he had no clothes. See, we have a tendency around here to want to placate things and pretend certain things don't exist. We still have a lot of problems in Greenville. Got racism that's going on. We got double standards going on. But we don't want to talk about those sides. And when people visit, they see those issues. We can't hide them. I double dare anyone you ought to come in my neighborhood where blacks feel like they no longer want it. What did we do? Why they don't want us around anymore? You talk about the gun violence? Well, let's make affordable housing. They don't have no place to live. I see people laying in the street, on my street, because they have no place to go. Our children have no place to go. They go to community centers to learn values and things. That's where it took a village in our neighborhood. We no longer have a village because gentrification came over and wiped out our village. And our culture has totally been wiped out. Black people are history. And that's what they doing to us right now. We just history. We no longer relevant in our community. Whatever the rich say, that's what goes on in our neighborhood. Forget what we feel, what we want, whatever they say, that's what happens. Because they got the money, they got the power. But my mother told me something very valuable. In the eyes of God, you will always be even and equal, but more so on Election Day. Regardless of how much that person's money they have, they only got one vote. So they can have a billion dollars or million dollars, they only got one vote. So we're going to change things in our Greenville. I'm going to have to tell people, we're going to have to start now change. Because people shouldn't be laying on the street in Greenville, South Carolina. And I can show you better, I can tell you. And I'll provide pictures next time I come.
Okay, thank you. Next is a public hearing, number 9A.
Abandonment of an unnamed alley between Hillside Circle and Briar Cliff Street.
Mayor and council, this is an opportunity for the public to speak on a potential abandonment of an unimproved alley. This is an unimproved dead-end alley off the Hillside Circle. We received a petition from Timothy Roberts, who is the owner of a vacant parcel there to the north of the alley that's highlighted there in red. And he's trying to build a house. It's a very constrained lot to develop for residential purpose. And the abandonment would accommodate his need to build on his lot. We've routed this through our internal review processes with local utility providers, other city departments and agencies. And we've also done our public notifications on the alley. We did receive one call from a resident on Friday afternoon that she lives on, at 13 Hillside, and she just had some general questions about the abandonment and how it might affect her property and her taxes and that sort of thing. But we really no objection to the abandonment itself. So I'd be happy to answer any questions y'all may have. I'm not sure. It doesn't sound like anybody signed up to speak on that.
Any question, then we'll have public comment.
Yeah, I want to ask, this question.
Ms. Fleming, move your microphone.
Well, thank you. Will this person use this abandonment to help, help build?
Yes, yes, ma'am. In fact, the parcel just to the south there at number eight, Hillside Circle, there are some relations between the two property owners. And they are working together to reconfigure their two properties. The vacant parcel is essentially probably not even developable without this reconfiguration. You can see the stream, the blue line going across the rear of the property. That's a stream. So there's some setback requirements off of it. We also have a sewer line that's not shown, that's just to the north of that stream, kind of parallels the stream that further kind of constrains the property from a development standpoint.
So when we abandon it, both of those properties will be able to access half of that abandoned area?
Yeah, they're actually showing to kind of straighten out the property lines. I don't have the final configuration to present. But rather than just splitting it down the middle of the alley, they're looking to reconfigure it slightly different than that. But they would both pick up some of that property.
Okay. Do we know when the unaddressed lot was purchased?
I could research that. I don't know off the top of my head.
I guess what I'm getting at is, is it possible someone purchased that lot for X dollars, probably pretty low if it's not developable? And now with the abandonment, now they have a lot buildable. This is over Brook?
Yeah.
With essentially free land.
And sometimes we see people purchase lots and they don't really do all their research on the property. And it may or not have been aware that there was an alley there. So, yeah, but that is possible, I guess.
But is the city the property, the rightful owner of the alley?
We have determined it was, it's a city filled with right-of-way.
Is there even an alley there or is it just?
It's unimproved. It's just trees.
Trees and woods.
Trees and woods, yes, sir.
All right, it's public hearing. Anybody here wish to speak on this matter? Okay. Sure. We had a couple hand, I'm sorry, I had hand raised back there too. Sorry. Well, no, go ahead, just keep it.
Are we giving or are we selling?
That's, we have the option to do either one.
You know, I think basically the way the city purchases property when they want it, that we should have this appraised and offer it to the person requesting and sell it to them at the appraised value if it's determined. I think we should give property to an individual.
This will ultimately be voted on by council? Yes, okay.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
And this is just public?
This is just public hearing?
Public hearing, right, okay.
Okay.
I am the purchaser of the property and I can tell you what the problem was. First of all, it's .01 acre. So we're not talking about a lot of land. And when we purchased the property, it was considered buildable. What has made it non-buildable is that Greenville did not, on any documentation, have the sewer line acknowledged. So what has changed it from being buildable to non-buildable was an unrecognized sewer line. So it wasn't actually the stream, it was the sewer line. And that's why, you know, we were trying to get the property because what was a buildable lot became an unbuildable lot.
Okay. Please provide us with your name for the record.
Sorry, it's Jelonne Quantrell. Would you like me to spell that?
Please.
First is G.I.L.O.N.N.E. Last name is Q.U.A.N.T.R.E.L.L.
So it's a tenth of an acre or a hundredth of an acre?
Pardon, it's .01.
So it's a hundredth of an acre?
Yeah.
It's not very, it's gotta be a tenth. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Millie, do you need her address too?
She was the purchaser, so I was fine.
Get that?
Yeah. But you think the thing was like .9, oh, I think it's like .0, something like that. Yeah. So, yeah.
.09.
It's .099.
But the document, the thing that they sent out said .9, which it definitely is not.
Yeah, okay.
So, sorry. Anyway.
Okay.
Anything?
All right, we had another hand raised back there. Did you want to speak on this? Sure. Just give your name and you want to address us too, you do this.
Yes, if you will. Please state your name and your address.
Gondlin Taylor, 13 Hillside Drive, Greenville, South Carolina, 20607.
Awesome.
This property is right behind my home. We received these letters. My question is, when this line, we don't know exactly how far this line is and how far it would go, will it affect our properties and us having to try to pay for this line that is not with us? And also, we add another home into that space on the road. The road is already super narrow. And adding, you don't need any more traffic at all to be added on the street or any more homes to be built in the spaces because it's tight already. If you go around the curve, it's too tight when you add, and then you add somebody else still in, which makes it tighter. And then if y'all not sure about this line, we don't know how long the line will go. So I'm seeing for myself, I don't want the line to come in the future to be running all the way back up into my property. And then I get a learn and say, oh, I'm responsible for a sewer line that I don't want. And I don't want it to affect my property nor my property taxes. So that's my question.
Okay, Clarence, you want to?
Yeah, I can answer those. It is an existing sewer line. This is not a proposed new sewer line that we would be constructing. So there's an existing sewer line that runs in this area. The city doesn't have any plans to expand that line or make any changes of that line and needed us to, the property either. Hillside Circle is a narrow street. I agree with you on that. It's fairly low volume. It's a, you know, lower volume residential street, but it is narrow. As the, if this moves forward and they build a house there, we would be working with them on our standard development codes to probably address some of the street standards along that road. And I do, and I do think they're, that they are, we'll have to get some zoning approvals on their setbacks and on their driveways in order to develop that lot, even if this abandonment does go through.
Yeah, okay.
Clarence. The stream that's going through the property, is that piped?
It's not.
It's open? Okay. So the, the body that has jurisdiction over that stream would be the Corps of Engineers?
Yeah, if this, well, they would have to make that determination, but there's a good chance it would be governed, regulated by the Corps.
And there are setbacks?
Yeah, there would be setbacks off there.
That are typical streams that are owned or regulated by the Corps of Engineers?
Well, that's actually regulated by city as far as setback requirements.
Okay, so the Corps really, they're like, the stream is ours and that's?
Yeah, if there was going to be any changes made, grading, piping, that sort of thing, it would have to have a permit from the Corps. As part of our stormwater ordinance, we control the setbacks from the drain.
The, the area in red is the .99 acre?
.099.
.09?
It's about a tenth of an acre. Will be 300 square feet.
Yeah, this .99 would be an acre, of course.
No, .1.
Thank you. You know, my strong suit, Dorothy. We talked about this earlier, didn't we? So to give context on these lots, let's say number 20 Hillside, is that, is that a .1 acre typically? I mean, would you just guesstimate?
These are, yeah, these are probably 6,000, 7,000 square foot lots. So probably closer to .1 and a half, .15 or .2.
Okay. And it's, it's number eight?
Well, it's actually the vacant lot to the north of the red.
Okay, that does not have a number, of course, but there's no home there, of course. So there's a property owner who's here today who wants to, that, how does a, just for purpose of education, how does a, you know, we faced this in North Maine many times where there's a, we faced this on Westview, didn't we?
Yep.
Where there was a, the city had a right-of-way and I can't, was it quick claim?
Quick claim.
Quick claim. And so, you know, there's nothing the city could do with that land on Westview, for example. I can't remember how big it was. It wasn't.
Small area.
Very small. And, but the, so is it, is it, is it a practice that municipalities will look at? I have two questions. Is it a practice that municipalities will look at areas where there was a right-of-way that is owned by the city but no longer needed by the city, that then is gifted or sold or both? Or how does that work?
Yeah, the oldness allows us to appraise the right-of-way and assign a value to it and sell the property. We have done that in the very few instances over the history. But, but we can also gift it or quick claim it gratis at no charge.
Like we did on Westview. How did these end up on our plots?
So.
Historically?
Yeah, so a lot of times they're established with the original subdivision flats that were developed when this part of Oberbrook was subdivided and developed. And I don't have that original subdivision plat date, but I'm sure it was.
Typically, typically someone, developer puts together and then, is it a mistake?
Very, well, at one time, there might have been a plan to build a rear access connection to some of the other lots. Maybe there was a plan to possibly even extend the road over to Briar Cliff and make the full connection is possible. It was a remnant piece of property that they said, hey, we can, we can reserve this as a right-of-way for future needs.
So there was a plan for it that's long since been abandoned?
Yeah, it was probably through the original subdivision of the property when all of the other lots were created along Hillside Circle.
Okay, all right, good, thank you.
I have another question, sorry. I would like to know as a follow-up, when this was purchased and miss, I missed your last name, I'm sorry. Quantrell, and what is your address now? Okay, did you get that? Okay. How does number eight get in and out of their property? Do they have a driveway that runs across this? Oh, are you number eight? Okay.
There is a driveway from the far left side.
Sir, if you could please come up to the mic, thank you.
From a distance, you look just like one of our planners, by the way. Good to meet you, number eight.
Thank you. To the left of, or right in front of the house, basically right to the left is a small driveway. It's basically a two-car, single-lane driveway. Basically, if you go from that northernmost point straight down, that is my front yard that I've been maintaining. Everything else is just weeds and then water runs off the road down in that direction.
Can we get your name for the record, please?
Timothy Roberts.
Thank you.
That's your question. Cool.
So just a little more, little more questions for, before it comes to council, not right now, tonight, but we've got some things to look at, I think.
Sure.
From a council position. Thank you.
Have we praised this land?
No, we have not.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, that concludes the public hearing on this matter. We'll move on to consent agenda. Do you have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, Lord Calderon.
Councilmember DeWolken.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Raisin.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Regular agenda, 15A.
And we shall allocate $954,034 in the capital projects fund to space upgrades and safety improvements allocated in the South Carolina state budget for fiscal year 2324.
So moved.
Second, court call the roll.
Any questions?
Karen, this is coming from the 20 million grant last year from the state that Representative Bannister championed. So this is just basically allocating from that grant money to cover?
Certain other projects.
Certain other projects. It's a bookkeeping thing per se?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, court call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorthing?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brayson? Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. Okay, 15V.
And ordinance to under section 2468, signs on right-of-way or other private property of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Greenville.
So moved. Second, court call the roll. Little background for these guys on what this is, what's going on with this? Yeah, it was discussed in the workshop.
This was discussed in the workshop, and, but again, just trying to clean up the ordinance for ease of staff to go back to how we had the prohibition of signs in the right-of-way under the previous land management ordinance, cleaning up the requirements about bus shelters and residential zones so that it's in line with our current Greenville Development Code, and also allowing the city manager the opportunity to put signs in the right-of-way if it's for the public good or for public information. There was a question asked during the work session by Councilmember Dow about the size of the signs, and through our new Greenville Development Code, those temporary signs vary depending on the type of sign that they are. But any temporary sign that is under, in a RH or RN district, which are our residential districts, can be 12 square feet or less without requiring a permit, so they can put up a sign that's under 12 square feet. And in any other district, it's less than 32 square feet. So we will, we want to clarify that a little bit in the code as part of our six-month update so that there's not, people, people aren't having to guess in between, but it's 32 and 12 under the existing code, under those, that don't require a permit. And that's what we do with, with temporary signs, but namely political signs, real estate signs, signs of that nature.
In order for something to be a permanent sign, it needs to be mounted to the ground, mounted to a structure? In other words, let's say I had a piece of property, and on the property was a fence, and I wanted to hang a banner.
That's not considered a permanent sign.
And even though I want to hang it there forever?
Nope, that's not considered a permanent sign.
Because it's not a fix.
That's right, and you would also have to meet all of the requirements for permanent signs in the ordinance, and it requires a permit. Most temporary signs do not require a permit, that's a good way to differentiate between the two.
How long is reasonable for a temporary sign to be up?
30 days.
30 days.
Other questions?
And we are, court call the roll.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Councilmember DeWorthing?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brayson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. Okay. Ms. Man, you got anything you want to report? I think we have good things to celebrate.
Yes, sir, we have a lot of great things to celebrate. First off, we had an amazing Jazz Fest this weekend, our second annual Jazz Fest. I would like to thank Tara Aker, Will Young, Anna Catherine Miller, and our entire tourism and events team for the work that they did for Jazz Fest, as well as all of our first responders, police, fire, public works that were there to provide support this weekend. I saw them all out and about, and it was an amazing weekend, thank you very much. I think a lot of people are already saying that this is their favorite event, so thank you. We have the groundbreaking of the Unity Park Tower tomorrow morning, and I think that that's an exciting thing to celebrate. We've had several accolades from the city that the city has received recently. Tonight, a work session, we were able to review our new marketing for, campaign for our Greenville City Economic Development Corporation, and are excited that we'll be able to make that website live by the end of the month. And so, having a lot of progress there, and really looking forward to a great summer. We will start our noise ordinance campaign tonight, I think the signs went up tonight. Yes, they did. And so, we do not, we would like everyone to remember that as much, as much fun as we can have in summer, we would like to make sure that we keep it at a respectful level for all, and that includes noise. And so, we would ask our community to work with us on noise, and if not, we'll, we'll look at other options, but we would ask for everyone to provide a respectful noise for everyone in our city. Mr. Mayor, anything else?
Got that right now, I think that's great. Welcome back.
Thank you very much, I'm glad to be home.
To all those who did travel in the last couple weeks, welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.